Thank you so much for being here. I want to read from this proclamation. Whereas excessive drinking is responsible for more than forty-three hundred deaths among underage youth each year, whereas alcohol is the most commonly used addictive substance in the United States, whereas more than one point six million young people report drug and under the influence of alcohol over the past year, and whereas young people who begin drinking before age fifteen are four times more likely to develop alcohol dependence than those who begin drinking at age twenty-one, and whereas drinking by persons under the age of twenty-one is linked to one hundred eighty-nine thousand emergency room visits, and whereas a typical American will see ten thousand, oh, sorry, one hundred thousand beer commercials before he or she turns eighteen, and whereas kids who drink are more likely to be victims of violent crimes, be involved in alcohol-related traffic crashes, and have serious school-related problems, and whereas the supportive family environment is associated with lowered rates of alcohol use for adolescents, and whereas kids who have conversations with their parents and learn a lot about the dangers of alcohol and drug use are fifty percent less likely to use alcohol on drugs than those who don't have such conversations. Whereas this year's theme is changing attitudes, it's not a rite of passage in the month of April when we feel that local, state, and national best aim at educating people about the treatment and prevention of alcoholism, particularly among our youth, and the important role that parents play in giving kids a better understanding of the impact alcohol can have on their lives, whereas alcohol awareness information posted will be displayed in the lobby of the county administration building, four-one, Grant Street, Patterson, during the month of April. Now therefore be proclaimed by the board of chosen freeholders of the county to say that hereby joins the National Council on Alcoholism and Drug Dependence, Inc., NCADD, in designating the month of April twenty eighteen as Alcohol Awareness Month, and the county of the state urges all citizens, parents, government agencies, public, private institutions, businesses, hospitals, schools, and colleges in the state county to support efforts to provide early education about alcoholism and addiction, and increased support for individuals and families coping with alcoholism, provide hope, help, and healing for those in our community who are facing challenges with alcohol use and abuse. Thank you so much for your support.
Thank you, Freeholder Akhtar, and thank you for the, thank you to the board of chosen freeholders for your continued support of the Passaic County Municipal Alliance programs. As we know, the disease of addiction does not discriminate, and it affects all our communities. By raising awareness and providing education, we hope to prevent substance use disorders and provide help, hope, and healing to those, individuals, and families suffering from the disease of addiction. Thank you again for your continued support, because it really is important.
I'll take a picture. Many of you may know, and some do not know, but our clerk to the board, Lou Imhoff's father suffers from Parkinson's, and I think that Lou, there's nobody from Parkinson's who was able to make it this evening, but Lou has asked if he could read the proclamation into the record on behalf of all those who suffer, particularly his dad.
Thank you, Madam Director and Administrator. Yes, the representative of American Parkinson's Disease Association sends her regrets, and she's the one who requested that the freeholders do a proclamation, and was not able to come. May I read into the record? Whereas the board of chosen freeholders in the county of Passaic would like to join other municipalities and counties throughout the state of New Jersey declaring April two thousand eighteen as Parkinson's Disease Awareness Month. Parkinson's Disease is a chronic progressive neurological disease and the second most common neurodegenerative disease in the United States. There is inadequate data on the incidences and prevalences of Parkinson's Disease, but it is an estimate to affect five hundred thousand to one million five hundred thousand people in the United States, and the prevalence will more than double by two thousand forty. Parkinson's Disease is the fourteenth leading cause of death in the United States according to the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention. It is estimated that the economic burden of Parkinson's Disease is at least fourteen point four billion annually, including indirect cost to patients and family members of six point three billion dollars. Research suggests that the causes of Parkinson's Disease is a combination of genetic and environmental factors, but the exact cause and progression of the disease is still unknown. There is no objective test or biomarker for the Parkinson's Disease. There is no cure or drug to slow or halt the progression of the disease. The symptoms of Parkinson's Disease vary from person to person and cannot include, can include tremors, slowness of movement or rigidity, difficulty with balance, swallowing, chewing, and speaking, cognitive impairment and dementia, mood disorders, and a variety of other non-motor symptoms. Volunteers, researchers, caregivers, and medical professionals are working to improve the quality of life of persons living with Parkinson's Disease and their families. Increased research, education, and community support services are needed to find more effective treatments and provide access to quality care for those living with the disease today, which include the two thousand eighteen web-based user-friendly program for police officers, firefighters, and emergency medical service providers, to help them recognize the unique symptoms and needs of those with Parkinson's Disease and enable them to provide the best and most appropriate care. Now therefore be proclaimed by the Passaic County Board of Chosen Freeholders, the county of Passaic, that the month of April two thousand eighteen is hereby designated as Parkinson's Disease Awareness Month in the county of Passaic, signed by all freeholders on this date, April twenty-fourth, two thousand eighteen. Thank you, freeholders.
Finally, on the, on my agenda, we have representatives of Honeywell. Can you guys hear me out there?
No.
Freeholders, this is Brian Layman from Honeywell, who is going to make a presentation this evening. The Energy Savings Improvement Program is commonly known as ESIP, as we have been dealing with this issue now for the better part of two years, Brian, I suppose, maybe longer.
Yes, September two thousand sixteen.
Time flies when you're having fun. So we are at the point where we thought it was important that the entire freeholder board be caught up to speed, as would the program, and the potential savings. So, Brian, I don't know if you want to introduce anybody else with a floor or yours.
Sure. Again, Brian, thanks again for having us tonight. Really appreciate the opportunity, and it's a really great project from the county, and the board is presenting to you. Have my team go ahead and introduce themselves, some of the roles of the project.
I'm Ed Wadwitz. I'm a Honeywell global finance, providing financing for customer projects.
I'm Dan Madden. I'm a regional manager at Honeywell.
Hi, Peter Eric, kind of executive, I'll be assisting Brian in delivery of the project.
And Bob Leto, operations manager for Honeywell.
The presentation I have--
Could we introduce our friends from T and M who are representing the county on this project?
We have a false group of T and M associates.
I'm the assistant senior vice president, T and M.
Thank you.
So I, it's a real brief presentation. Get to high level for right now. I can get into as much detail as you would like on the project. I'm not on script here. Ask me questions, stop me at any time, so just kind of, what I want to do is bring you up to speed, a little refresher on the general idea of ESIP. Can you all see the screens?
And they have screens in front of them.
Oh, they do? Okay. Talk a little bit about ESIP refresher, go into a little bit of the project overview details, a little bit of the operational impact, talk about the project schedule, and if there's any questions, feel free to chime in. Like I said, you can chime in as I'm presenting here or at the end. So the concept behind ESIP is it's a way for the district, for the county, to get capital infrastructure upgrades without debt against their cover. So right now, you have a set amount that you pay to the utility for, you know, natural gas, electric, things like that. So the concept behind this is after ESIP, a portion of that, instead of getting paid for the utility, you'll actually have an asset for it. So instead of saying you pay two point four billion dollars, you'll now be paying one point three million dollars, and there will be more capital infrastructure upgrades for the county. It's also, the general idea behind it is to take the risk off the counter, because we guarantee all these savings. It was fully vetted by T and M Engineering, did a very thorough job vetting out the energy savings calculations. As you said, Tony, it has been, you know, since about a year and a half, and we spent the most part of last year walking the facilities, doing investment-grade energy audit, is what it's called. We developed the energy conservation measures, which I can talk about a little bit in the next slide here. Calculated the energy savings, and we put together what's called the Energy Savings Plan. That's what T and M has reviewed and approved to date. It's about fourteen hundred pages, so it's not something you want to sit down and read over the weekend, but like I said, I'll answer any questions that you guys have here. I can get as deep into the details technically as you want, or I can talk about it at a high level. The project we came up with, self-funded project, it's about eleven point nine million dollars, with about a little over a million dollars in annual energy and operational savings. So the operational savings are important as well, too, because, you know, the lights in here, you're changing these lamps probably every three years, maybe four years or so. Multiply that by forty thousand, and you're only doing it once every ten years, it adds up to a lot of money on an annual basis. Not only that, some, one example is over at the district courthouse. The building's eighty years old. The infrastructure of that, of that building is hydronic piping for heating and cooling, and over time, after eighty years, it, it just starts to degrade, it erodes. And what you've had, I think in the past year, there's been twelve pipe replacement leaks, and each time these things happen, it interrupts not only the operation, because the drain, the water out of the system, it's costing, it's ten to fifteen thousand dollars each time. So on annual basis, that was around one hundred twenty to one hundred eighty thousand dollars in costs that can be mitigated through the ESIP project, and I'll talk a little bit about what exactly we're doing to mitigate those problems. As I said before, ESIP was to reduce county risk. We will take on the risk as far as the energy guarantee goes. Not only that, is we offer a gross maximum price for a defined scope of work. What that means is no change orders. We have a defined scope that we provided through the Energy Savings Plan, and we will bid it out publicly, just as you typically would for any county project. However, if it comes in over budget, we're not going to go in and value engineer something out, try to do something cheaper, change this or that. The scope is what it is. So if it comes in over budget, we bid it three times, it's still over budget, it's on us, comes out of us. But if it comes in under budget, the county gets the, all the benefits of that, can add more projects in or reduce their overall cost of the project. It's really up to you, it's your mind, you can do as you please. Said to talk a little bit about operational impacts of this project, yes, we're going to begin all these spaces that are occupied, so what we like to do as much as possible is work second shift. I know some of these areas are also high during second shift, and not so, not as much, but prosecutors' office, things like that. There's going to be some coordination, but as much as possible, we do everything that we can to not impact the operations of the county. Of course, we do that through coordination with the facilities group to let everyone know when we're coming in, when we're doing these changes, what the impacts will be, what the duration will be. We have a two-week look ahead as to where we're looking to be over the next two weeks as, as construction goes forward. Also, one thing to look at on here is says total positive cash flow. Over the term of the fifteen-year lease, lease or bond payments, that is what it's spinning off as far as excess cash flow over the term. So it can be completely cash neutral, in your, in your situation with the project we have identified, and it's not just that we've identified, we've worked with the county to determine what their needs are, and what were the priorities of the county. It spins off almost five hundred thousand over the term of the payment. I'm going to go back real quick. So what are we actually doing? We're doing lighting LED replacements throughout all the county buildings, including the apartment garage. I don't know if you've been in there sometimes, some of the lights, they aren't all on. It's one of those things, these LED lights nowadays, there's a ten-year warranty, you don't have to touch them for ten years, which is really nice. We're replacing some transformers, some electrical infrastructure of the, of the county. We're completely replacing it for putting in a new piping system at the district courthouse, where all those leaks are coming in to the age of the piping. It's going to be, you know, a lot of coordination on that, because it's, while it's, it's got to operate while we're doing this piping replacement. So a lot of coordination, but you know, I know you guys are up, your facilities guys are great, they've done great with what they have here. Sometimes it's just time, time to put the new stuff in, so we look forward to working with the facilities group to coordinate to make sure this is a successful project. We're also replacing the boiler at the district courthouse. We're putting in new building management systems at some of the buildings in the county. There's a solar PPA in the county as well, that's going to be at Preakness. Am I missing that? There's some boiler burr controls. I said transplant, I forgot transplant. I have a full list, we can get into these details if you want to. Just as far as schedule goes, what we foresee, this is, we think is achievable, but it all does depend on what financing route we go. Sometimes capital leases are quicker, but there can be, you know, a little bit higher in interest rate, but then bond, selling bonds takes a little bit longer, but the cost of issuance is higher. So I know you've been working with N W Financial to share that up, determine what are your best options. So our thoughts were, and the next steps here would be that the county would approve and adopt the Energy Savings Plan, allow us to submit this to the BPU for approval. At that time, they have about two weeks to review it and approve that plan. At that point, you can authorize to go out for financing. That could be done as early as May, if there's a, as early as June, start that process. I chose the date of, I chose July to August for financing to close. August would be, you know, the bonds or so, that seems like a reasonable period, it's about a three-month process. Then we have to develop our design documents and bid out the work. All in all, we foresee that this would potentially start construction, you know, shovels in the ground, maybe November or December. That's all I have right now. If you have any questions, if you want me to go into more details about any of these projects specifically, please let me know.
The pipe in the district courthouse, the heat?
It's a two-pipe system that actually does heating and cooling.
Well, so what season are we doing it?
Well, the plan is to, because we're going to put the new piping in during either the heating or cooling season for the night of the time, but the important part would be when we can transition over to the new piping, because you have to drain it, and we'll have to drain, we have to fill the new one. A lot of times you would love to do this on a nice one dead, it's a thing I'd say would be great. Could also be done over the weekend if the building's on. But we can do it while the heating or cooling is operational.
Brian, quickly, if I'm wrong, we're actually running parallel pipes, we're not, we're not removing old pipes for you, we're running new parallel pipes? So the actual, right, the actual process of installing the pipes, the season is irrelevant?
Thank you.
What will matter is when we actually hook the new boilers up to the ground.
Can you tell me more about the ESIP, would be a solar array at Preakness? Yes, can you tell me more about that? Sure. What we typically do is we can, we'll work with the county to put out an RFP, so it's proposals for solar PPA. We'd like, actually prefer that to be one of the first things that is done. At that time, you can, sometimes these rates, we've been seeing them come in as low as three point eight cents a kilowatt hour. We have budgeted at five cents a kilowatt hour, so this really is a nice pickup on that. Timeline for, for completion on it, bottom, I'd say what we've been seeing recently is they have to do, go and get approvals from utility, from county, locally. I anticipate construction maybe in the summer of next year, the solar?
Yeah, it's, we can get out the bid, support that, get awarded relatively quickly, in a couple months, but yeah, you probably looking at about a calendar here from where we would start the process. Where's it going?
It's going on the roof of Preakness, and there's some ground mounted as well.
And that move, that power will be delivered to Preakness, or will it just be sold back to?
Preakness, it'll, the panel of Preakness.
The age of the roof there?
Less than ten years old, right?
Yep. We did do--
I'm not that interested, I guess, no.
We did do it, there wasn't an analysis done, and whether it can support it.
Well, I just don't want to be redoing the roof with a solar array up, and so, you know, what's the life expectancy of the panels, and what's the life expectancy of the roof, or are we going to be trying to rip those down, replace a roof at some point?
Yeah, I believe, I believe your right is about ten years, I confirm it unless you-- So we did, we had a full, at both T and M.
If I could just ask, if you're going to talk, I just want to be sure that you're being put on tape for the records, so just ask you to come forward.
Peter Eric, from Honeywell. Good evening. So, T and M assisted in putting out an examination of the roof at Preakness, and it was deemed to be in excellent condition. One of the nice things about solar panels is they actually extend the life of roofs, because they protect the roofs from damage and erosion. So it's one of the unintended benefits of putting solar up on roofs. And the life expectancy of the solar panels is, has increased with technology, as the cost has gone down, so it's as much as twenty, twenty-five years, with minimal degradation in terms of output. We're looking at about forty megawatt of solar output, and that will reduce the annual Preakness, and help the county invest in sustainability and energy.
Any parking lot maintenance, do us report parking lot panels?
We looked at that, and because the parking lot is in such good condition, we don't, we don't recommend this time to do.
It's in what condition?
It's, you're going to need to resurface the parking lot in less time than the structures that support the county building being installed, and the payback of solar parking lot can be so, it doesn't provide, it's not, it's not worth the investment, because whereas we can get you about a five cent per kilowatt hour rate with ground mounted solar, the roof for parking lot can be like nine, ten cents, so it reduces your solar savings. Because-- Because you're actually having to get still build the structures. So it's not that--
So you're saying it's costly if it costs that way, the savings?
Exactly.
Well, we are going to put it right this way.
Yes, it just goes, it stays on the ground.
Talk a little bit for the freeholders about the BPU, what they require in a project like this, because I think that would, would help with a question like that. So there are certain parameters that before the BPU will approve a project such as this, that we have to meet certain requirements--
Correct.
--in terms of savings.
Right. As far as savings goes, just that it has to literally be net cash flow positive on an annual basis. You do it over the term of fifteen or twenty years, this one is over the term of twenty years, or fifteen years, I'm sorry. You can only take into account five years of operational savings, so while we have only three to five years of operational savings here, you're going to continue to see operational savings long after that, from, especially from the upgrades that we're doing here. The BPU also requires that it is vetted and reviewed, and the calculations are reviewed by an independent third party, which in this case was T and M, which was hired by the county
It's funny that you have, it's interesting that you say that the, the parking lot structures aren't, if they don't bring you the bank for the buck, the roof structures do, but yet, you look at William Pass, and you look at Mountain Development, Mountain Development just to, they seem to be investing in, I guess.
It's what we've been seeing in the marketplace now, I mean, some, sometimes they're done in smaller areas as they have a means to go green, to show initiative, and things like that, while right now we would be focused this on energy savings payback to get some other infrastructure upgrades for the county.
So this was a real moving target, which is why it's taken the year and a half of what projects we looked at that we had hoped we'd be able to do, but didn't provide the same savings that would allow the project to move forward.
Can you talk about going to LED lighting? Does that include fixtures, or are you just changing bulbs?
Typically, it's, we're just going to be changing the bulbs. We've run across some fixtures that are in real bad shape. We have included in the project, it's called a design allowance. What it is, is if we run through, and it's your money, it's the county's money to do this, what they please, but there's a specific area where you say, oh, man, I just want to put new bulbs in here, we really should be replacing these fixtures. If it's one particular office, then that's where you can pull that money from for that as well.
These, these won't be able to replace without, these will be able to replace with fixtures.
They take twenty minutes to correct.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't think so. There's a, there's a long line in my line, and I, I don't know exactly--
I don't know at all.
There's just--
So again, the premise behind the project is, is that it's, where are we now, eleven million dollar project, give or take, right?
Eleven point nine million.
So the premise behind the project is, is that we will spend the money and reap the savings through energy efficiency and, and, and other efficiencies with changing bulbs, and even less heat that is generated, therefore saving money on HVAC and a lot of that.
I think eleven point nine will save twelve point four and over here.
You're saving eleven point nine? You're spending eleven point nine, save, oh, the half a million dollar?
That's not over the fifteen year, right? That's not an annual?
That's correct. Yeah, it's expensive to be cash, a little bit neutral or positive, but yeah, it's spending that, getting the, instead of paying the utility, you actually get some-- get something.
We even made upgrades in that April, right? For the net, for the net.
And in long-run savings, the, we'll, any boiler would have to be.
Right. At the end of the day, you have the asset, you also have Honeywell, who's going to be, you know, spearheading the project, as opposed to the county having to either go out and hire somebody or try to do it ourselves, piece meal.
My question wasn't intended to sound skeptical. It makes sense to probably, and a half million, to save 12 and a half million, and also produce our product.
Correct.
This has been a long, we've been talking about this for quite a long time. And I think, you know, it was a meeting with the BPU, or I think, might have fired for us to move forward to where we are today. Not letting something happen, because at least the cost savings must be cost at best, but cost saving is a plus, and I think that's where we're headed. So it's been a long time of getting here, but happy to hear.
Okay, then we will, we'll move forward in our next meeting with the resolution to, to concur with the plan, and then you'll be able to submit to the BPU after that.
Okay. Thank you, Ernie. How many pages is it? About 1,400? If you can put that on a disc.
Brian, you may have, did you send us a template of what that resolution should look like?
I did, it was a while ago, I could reset it.
Okay, I can find it. We may have even done it. It's done?
No.
You have it.
I'm fine.
I'll find it. If not, I'll let you.
Okay. Thanks again.
Thank you all very much, appreciate the time. Matt, with the ready?
Good job. I review your agenda. Do we have any late starters or amended resolutions?
No.
Do we have any need to go into executive session?
No.
Okay. Do you have motion, John?
We have motion.
Duffy?
Nothing.
Who's second?
Freeholders, Opter, Bartlett, Best, Duffy, LaFour, Deputy Director James, Director Lazar.
Yes. Do we have an announcement? Opened public meeting, more?
Ladies and gentlemen, notes requirement of local public meetings law has been satisfied with respect to this being specified, the time, date, location, and the public notice that was published in the Herald News and the burner record on April 19, 2018, adopted with resolution R-2018-264 on April 10, 2018, filed with County Clerk in Post in Administration Building.
Roll call.
Freeholders, Opter, Bartlett, Best, Duffy, LaFour, Deputy Director James, Director Lazar.
Yes. Can we see up the information?
O God, who provides for thy people by thy power and rules over them in love, be gracious enough to bless thy servants, our freeholders in the county of Passaic, that thy people may dwell in peace and safety through our Lord. Amen.
Amen.
Ernie, pledge allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the light of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Have a moment of silence to remember the men who have died while serving in the United States armed forces. A moment of silence to remember our former First Lady, Laura Bush.
And Freehold Director, please offer that pass away.
And, yes. Do we have motion to approve the minutes of April 10, 2018?
Move it.
LaFour and, who was it? James?
Freeholders, Opter, Bartlett, Best, Duffy, LaFour, Deputy Director James, Director Lazar.
Yes. Motion to approve the preparations.
Next.
Bartlett and LaFour.
Freeholders, Opter, Bartlett, Best, Duffy, LaFour, Deputy Director James, Director Lazar.
Yes. Okay, I'll have to freehold the reports, and I guess I'll start. The month of April 2018, or every April actually, is, one of the things we recognize is sexual assault awareness month. And if you'll take a look on the wall over here, where you say, Kathy says no more, I would just like to recognize Marquisha Guthrie for all the work she spearheaded this event that we partook in last week, organizing and implementing it, and it was a wonderful way to recognize the month of April as sexual assault awareness month. And on behalf of myself and the entire board, we thank you, Marquisha, you did a great job. Okay.
Yeah, with everybody's permission, I'd like to take one of our pre-game shows in the next couple of months and have a review of all the participants in our ream program in jail, so we can understand where we're at, what we're doing. Right now, we have 70 participants in the program, so I think they find it very interesting, Haji from jail, or, the law of the councilors, and we get a full view of what that helped out right there. With your permission, Director.
That's great. You did a lot of hard work on that. Freeholder, Opter.
I'm here.
Freeholder, LaFour.
Thank you, Director. In addition to the month of April being sexual assault awareness month, as you mentioned, April is also autism awareness month, and we did talk a little bit about that in our previous meeting. But one of the things that we can do as freeholders is make information available to families that need it. So I'm grateful to my colleagues and to our friends at the Public Safety Academy and the entire panel for being part of a program tomorrow that I want to make sure everyone knows about. You can find all these details on Passaic County Facebook page, you'll find an event listing there for this, but tomorrow evening from 7 to 9 p.m., we're hosting a autism awareness month forum for people to learn about available county resources here in Passaic County. And that includes folks from Francine Glitz's office, who do great work in the area of human services, human development, includes the State Office of DBRS, which stands for something that I don't see here, but it's vocational and rehabilitative services, Passaic County Workforce Investments Board, our sheriff's office, for issues relating to the safety of people on the autism spectrum, as well as a terrific local advocate, Cecilia Feely, Dr. Cecilia Feely, who does work on transportation for young adults like her son who are on the spectrum, and Wayne Township Councilwoman, Eileen Rivera, who's been an incredibly effective advocate at state level on a lot of these issues, particularly as it relates to the safety of people on the spectrum who are under state or private care. So for all of you out there who may have people in your family who are affected by autism, know that this program's going to be happening tomorrow evening at 7 p.m. at the Public Safety Academy. You can find details online. We are also, with the help of Patrick Alexander from your office administrator, going to be videotaping, do they say that anymore, videotaping? Making a video recording digitally of the program, which will be rebroadcast online as well as on public access TV. But if you can, please join us tomorrow evening at the Public Safety Academy, and thank you very much.
Freeholder, Best?
I'm fine, thank you.
Freeholder, LaFour?
Thank you, Director. The details of my committee, Finance Committee, are in the 18 resolutions for the freeholders tonight on the incentive agenda. So all the details are in the resolutions. We have to answer any questions. Thank you.
Okay.
Before you move on, a couple of items of note on the agenda. Resolution 27 is approving the plans and specs for the, maybe the last piece of the puzzle at Dime Mansion, to restore the historic gardens, which is exciting, in conjunction with that on May 12 at 2 p.m. Kelly, 2 p.m. on May 12 is the ribbon cutting for the new visitor center at the mansion as well. And then also, resolution 28 is awarded contract for the Marshall Hill Road Culver up in West Milford, feel the Duffy, just so that you know, we'll be sure getting some commentary about that. And the other good news is that the Westbrook Road Bridge is, was open last week. If you get any complaints that it's a little bumpy, it's because they have not put the final coat of asphalt on, on the bridge. But it is open to traffic, and the next phase will be the demolition of the old bridge. Thank you.
Thank you. Communications?
Moving on.
Definitely not.
Freeholders, Opter, Bartlett, Best, Duffy, LaFour, Deputy Director James, Director Lazar.
Now, I want you to open the public portion of the meeting. James and Opter.
Freeholders, freeholders, Opter, Bartlett, Best, Duffy, LaFour, Deputy Director James, Director Lazar.
Yes. Anyone would like to be heard, please come up to your podium. You have three minutes, state your name and address, please.
Good evening, I'm Vera Lazar, 22 Spencer Avenue, Clifton. I just wanted to follow up this evening on a letter I sent regarding restoration work along the shoreline and riparian area of Barber's Pond. This is following the dredging work. As I mentioned in the letter, there had been much disturbance in clearing here and loss of important bird habitat. However, I'm not, I realize this was necessary for the dredging, I'm not here to complain about that, but rather looking forward to the restoration. Jonathan Para, the engineer, did respond, and I am very glad to know that the contractor will be taking care of cleaning up the site, and also glad to hear that they will be planting several new trees. I was wondering if there are any details on these trees, such as what species, diameter, and location where they will be planted, and also wondering about the overall restoration of the site for this area. Will there be other trees as the county planting, shrubs, grasses, or other riparian plants? In addition to the ecological and aesthetic value of the riparian plantings, without any vegetation, much of the soil is already eroding back into the pond. Now, I do realize they still need to install a pump and aeration system, but looking forward beyond that, when all is said and done, I'm wondering what exactly will be the plan? It would be wonderful if the county would be contracting a landscape specialist for this area. However, if not, the, myself and the friends of Garrett Mountain, our members and other volunteers, as I mentioned in the letter, would be very happy to assist the county with any plantings and habitat restoration here. One other thing I just wanted to mention is about the Rifle Camp Park Nature Center. It's been locked and no one allowed in for many months now. I know that will be reopened eventually, however, there are still many plants inside, which unfortunately and very sadly are dying from lack of water and neglect. Apparently, even the park workers do not have access to the building. Some of these plants is too late for, but there's cactus, which are still alive and in need of care. So I would like to make a request, if the county can possibly provide access, either for one of the park attendants to have access and water the plants on a regular weekly basis, or if not, perhaps we can work something out so that the plants can be removed from the center and kept elsewhere until the new center reopens.
Hi there, Anne Schnackenberg, 268, Washington Avenue, Clifton, New Jersey. I agree with Vera about the plans and about the restoration efforts. Please, if there's something you can do about that, we'd appreciate it. I think everybody would. We're glad to see that you've created a shared service agreement between the county and the Improvement Authority for Administration of Tourism and Marketing Campaign. So I'd like to suggest, why not partner with some other organizations, considering the great birding area that this is, and we're in peak season right now. Moving forward for next year, let's look at what's going on now, and try to partner with organizations such as Audubon, New Jersey Audubon, and promote birding at Garrett Mountain IB, IBBA, and with Earth Day and all these other events happening. And I'd like to encourage you to go up there and see the mountain and go see the birders, see the parking lots full of, of people. Even on a weekday morning, there's people up there, and these people are bringing revenue into the county, and that is, that is of a great importance, because this is the single most important bird area for land birds and migratory birds in the state of New Jersey. So let's show some Passaic County pride in our local, our Passaic County Park, in our IBM, IBA rather, and try to draw some attention in and help the local businesses around this time of year next year. Garrett Mountain's special habitat, I want to encourage county to please meet with local groups, let's find a path forward to improve and protect this, this habitat, this special habitat with environmental oversight, some kind of professional environmental oversight. Again, once again, we're at the point where I've been going back through the minutes, there's a removal of leaning and fallen trees. On one hand, you're about to spend a lot of money and embark on a deer exclusion fence to promote growth of the forest floor. On the other hand, removing, granted, you don't want any, any safety issues, but fallen trees on the ground, DK and its free fertilizer, it helps the forest floor grow, why take away from that? Because the, the two things need to go hand in hand, and just want to encourage that. I see that you're, they're applying for a community forest management plan, that's great, but we're hoping that that will include a more comprehensive management plan, especially for Garrett Mountain and Rifle Camp Park and the important bird areas, because forest management involves so much more. I know that the first things on the docket appear to be hazardous tree evaluations for all county roads, granted, that's very important, and, and the same for the parks, but it's more tree removal, tree removal, tree removal. We need more tree planting, we need more efforts to maintain safe habitat and healthy forests, so that this very fragile ridge line park that's very special can continue to grow for the next 100 years and, and be here for our children. And again, the restoration of the riparian corridor, I see that there, there's a change order for the one along Goffa Brook and the beautification of Goffa Brook Park. God, I admit, we're all a little, a little envious of this. So we would like to know where the plan is for the riparian corridor for Garrett. Thank you.
I'm here to talk to you tonight about riparian buffers. It's a very small environment, the area between the shoreline and the forest, but it's a very important environment to the life of the forest and the animals and creatures that live there. The word riparian means next to the banks of streams, rivers, lakes, estuaries, or other waters. A riparian buffer is a strip of forested or vegetated land bordering a body of water and is important in protecting water quality. A buffer may be any combination of shrubs, herbs, and native grasses, but the best vegetation for stabilizing stream banks and removing nutrients is deep-rooted woody vegetation. Riparian buffers are managed as two zones. The zone closest to the water provides stream bank and shoreline protection. The outer zone slows and spreads out the flow of water coming from the land, trapping sediment and other pollutants. Buffer Zone 1 would be 30 feet of undisturbed forest vegetation. Buffer Zone 2 would be 20 feet of managed. Buffer Zone 2 would be 20 feet of managed vegetation, and then this stream or pond. The benefits of riparian buffers are protecting property from eroding away, providing flood control, absorbing noise, provide privacy, they take up nutrients, they filter sediment, they control water temperature, they provide wildlife food and habitat, and they also provide recreational value such as fishing and bird watching. There's an opportunity now to do a beautiful riparian restoration at Barber's Pond, and you've expressed an interest in this project, and I wish you will. Barber's Pond has many diverse animal species, many of which would benefit from quality riparian area. Thank you.
Two weeks ago, I was asked by freeholder Bartlett if I was a taxpayer. The answer is yes, and I pay almost $30,000 in taxes per year. And as a taxpayer, I should be afforded the same rights and privileges as other taxpayers in Passaic County. The right to live peacefully inside my home, to enjoy my backyard, to open my windows for fresh air, to have an uninterrupted night's sleep without having to hear the loud and incessant noise from the rumble strips. The right to be able to pull in and out of my driveway safely without getting hit, beeped at, or cursed at because I have to drive slowly over the rumble strips that are in front of my driveway. The right to live on a street without having illegal quadruple yellow lines painted on it. In late 2017, all of the homes on Colfax Road decreased at the exact same time, directly following the installation of the rumble strips. Some decreased by 40,000, some 50, and in some cases 100,000, like my own home. This cannot be a coincidence. You can check this for yourself on homevalues.com. This is how these strips have adversely affected all of the residents on Colfax Road. A good portion of the, a good number of the Colfax Road residents are 80-plus years and older. They're counting on the equity in their homes to live on. Passaic County should be helping us residents to maintain our home values, not decrease them.
Carolyn Marcusson, 413 Colfax Road. I'm becoming for the freeholders, seeking removal of the rumble strips on Colfax Road because it's not an appropriate safety measure for a road with the characteristics of Colfax. Now, I just wanted to point out that the funding for the rumble strips came from the Federal Highway Safety Improvement Program. With respect to the installation of rumble strips, the statute that governs that program states, "The term 'highway safety improvement project' includes a project for one or more of the following," and this is right in the statute, "installation of rumble strips if the rumble strips do not adversely affect the safety or mobility of bicyclists, pedestrians, and the disabled." Now, since the installation of the rumble strips, you've heard many residents come before you, bringing to your attention numerous instances where the rumble strips do exactly that, they adversely affect safety. And you may remember that one of the residents told you that while he was waiting with his daughter for a school bus, he saw a car hit the rumble strip, which caused the driver to jerk the wheel and head toward her shoulder where he was standing with his daughter. And I told you in my experience raking leaves in my front yard where the same thing happened, a driver hit the rumble strip, headed straight for me, actually crossing over the white shoulder line. This is a known phenomenon. Noting studies that have shown that rumble strips can result in vehicles moving away from the center line, so it's not just us, these are studies that show that. The Federal Highway Administration states that pavement width limits the usefulness of center line rumble strips. And because of this, the FHA states that safe accommodation of all road users should be considered, including bicyclists and pedestrians, and it recommends at least 14 feet of pavement. But we don't have 14 feet on Colfax. In fact, we have a lot less in most, in just about every instance on that road. Residents also warned you in October that runoff issues on Colfax would likely create dangerous pockets of snow and ice in the grooves, and the buildup of snow and ice is also a well-documented problem in winter conditions. So everybody knew this, even the county. And sure enough, on February 8, 2018, an accident did occur because there was snow and ice buildup, and it caused a car to cross over, go back and forth over the rumble strips, crossover, and sever a cement mailbox in two. And the question is, is what if it happened at that very moment that a resident was getting their mail at that mailbox, or a child was waiting for a school bus? Because these are all accidents that those of us in Colfax could foresee. We knew that they could happen, and something actually did. So what we want to say is just simply that the demonstrative evidence exists showing you that rumble strips can adversely affect safety when roads have certain characteristics, like the narrow wing lists that we have on Colfax, like our runoff issues. And when a road has those characteristics, it causes safety concerns for other users of the road, like bicyclists and pedestrians. These are documented facts, but the freeholders have more. You have eyewitness accounts, you have an actual accident of how the rumble strips adversely affect the safety of bicyclists and pedestrians on Colfax. And because of the characteristics on Colfax, based upon the statute, the rumble strips should not have been installed on Colfax and should be removed.
At this time, I'd like to invite our engineer, Steve Edmunds, up, please, just to, we did -- oh, I'm sorry, anyone else? Have a motion closer. Duffy and James, we have a report here about the rumble strips that we would like to share with you.
Freeholders after, Bartlett, Best, Duffy, LaPorte, Deputy Director James, Director Lizarra.
First of all, Ms. Lamanna and Ms. Marcusson, thanks again. Thanks for coming again. Ms. Lamanna, I did get your email the other day, and I passed that by, and we're going to do our best to meet your deadline. I'm not going to give any surprises away, but we'll do our best to meet your deadline. I did want to correct something you said earlier. I didn't ask last time we met if you were a tax payer. I pointed out that all of us are, including you, including myself, and I know that Steve, Mr. Edmunds is going to present this, but this is something that we've been looking into, to the point of seeking a report and more information to follow up on the letter from Wayne Police that I think Carolyn, it was you that provided to me at our last meeting. So with that, Steve.
As you know, there's been a lot of discussion regarding the center line rumble strips on Colfax Avenue. As such, I've had the county traffic engineer do some more research, initial report on it, and the primary job of the county traffic engineer is for traffic safety. First of all, the Federal Highway Administration has made federal funds available for several what they call approved safety countermeasures. They have actually listed about 20 of them. In the report here, I have listed six that the county has actually employed to increase safety on the roadways, roundabouts, median barriers, road diets, which we have done extensively in Wayne, roadway curve delineations, this is additional signs, additional markings to mark the curves, high pricks and surface treatments, which we have started up in the upper portion of the county on Greenwood Lake Turnpike, and Glenwild Avenue, we'll do some more hopefully on McPepe Road in that bit, and also center line rumble strips for which we installed over 50 miles in the county on Barry's Roads. The FHWA website on the center line rumble strip states, "With roadway departure crashes accounting for more than half of all the fatal roadway crashes annually in the United States, rumble strips and stripes are designed to address these crashes caused by distracted, drowsy, or otherwise inattentive drivers who drift from the lane. They are most effective when employed in a systematic application since driver error may occur on all roads." We did do a Colfax Avenue crash history. We researched from 2004 to 2016. We found eight crashes, eight center line crossover crashes in that time period, and in the report, I had the, the police case listed there. They were based upon opposite direction sideslipes, opposite direction head-ons, opposite direction face object. These are the types of crashes or accidents that the center line rumble strips are, are preventing. There's some other benefits to the center line rumble strips in inclement weather. The rumble strips help you two ways. First, because of how the spike beam runs in and out of the depressions of the center line rumble strips offers more line visibility at night and in inclement weather. And then, second, when you have heavy rains and the, the center lines are not as visible due to the amount of rain on top of the glass of the center line, the rumble strips also alert you that you are crossing over the center line. Because it was a bicycle corridor, we did not do any center line rumble strips here. So we took the bicyclist into account by where we didn't have the 14-foot width, we took a look for all the bicycle corridor roadways in the county. There are a lot of documented safety benefits to center line rumble strips. We have listed nine, seven states that have done analysis of the fore and after crashes with center line rumble strips. They range from 70% down to 34%, but that is still quite an increase in the reduction of the crashes. In conclusion, the engineering report recommends that the center line rumble strips on Colfax Road be retained due to their proven ability to prevent center line crossover crashes, and the demonstrated history of such crashes on Colfax Road. So, conclusion of this report.
Does anyone have any time?
I have a clean copy of Mr. Edmunds' report, if you guys want to grab it.
Have a motion to move the personnel agenda?
Freeholders after, Bartlett, Best, Duffy, LaPorte, Deputy Director James, Director Lizarra.
Motion to move the personnel agenda?
Freeholders after, Bartlett, Best, Duffy, LaPorte, Deputy Director James, Director Lizarra.
Yes. Have a motion to move the personnel.
Freeholders after, Bartlett, Best, Duffy, LaPorte, Deputy Director James, Director Lizarra.
Yes. Have a motion to move the certification.
That was certification. Freeholders after, Bartlett, Best, Duffy, LaPorte, Deputy Director James, Director Lizarra.
Are we good? Are we receiving the formal mental records?
Received and filed.
Recently, in the past week, we've had put up fencing around Weasel Brook Park in Clifton due to high levels of arsenic. We have our consultants here today who are willing to answer any questions anyone may have about the site and how we're moving forward in taking care and remediating that site.
I didn't know if any freeholders, I certainly didn't know if any public would be here with regards to it, but I didn't know if any freeholders have any questions or concerns that they may want to ask Jeff or consultants who got all dressed up and came out here this evening.
I think that the, for us, I think that the explanation and the memo from our health department was self-explanatory. It's very common in the things that were farms. This was a farm. I think we're erring on the side of caution, which I think we should do. This is that somebody by walking in a park may get sick, but we don't know what we don't know, and I think erring on the side of caution is fine. We'll find out what needs to be done to remediate it immediately, but in the meantime, I think those areas that were closing off is the wise move. It's certainly not going to impede, you know, our progress, except it's going to delay a bit, but I think we're doing the right thing by doing that.
Which was the intent when we had the meeting about this, to be proactive in this event and take care of everything?
I'm very proactive, and sorry that we didn't do something that we should have done.
Absolutely. Okay.
I have a question for the consultant. Just wondering, I am--
Vera, you're gonna have to, you're gonna have to come up if the director allows.
Okay. Well, I just--
Just say your name again through the recorder.
Yeah, Vera Lizar, and I'm from Clifton, and I have, I don't really know too much about what actually was found at Weasel Brook, but I'm wondering if you can talk a little bit about that, what, where in Weasel Brook was found, and what is being done to remediate the, was it just arsenic that was discovered? How was it discovered? And how, I'm on the Clifton Environmental Commission also, so I'm wondering, maybe you can--
Clifton's aware of this, by the way.
Yeah, I know. It was, I think it happened after our last meeting, so just wondering, what, what is actually being done to, to remediate that? So that was--
Jeff Cozak, T&amp;M Associates, LSRP for the eventual remediation of Weasel Brook Park. The county went after Greenacre's funding for the improvements of the park. As part of the Greenacre's application, you have to perform a preliminary assessment. Distoric agricultural use was a potential area of concern found during the preliminary assessment process. There's guidance documents from the DDT that state how you should investigate for potential historically applied pesticides. So, T&amp;M collected seven samples from the grass areas within Weasel Brook as our initial site assessment. Four of those seven samples indicated that arsenic was above the residential and non-residential dry contact cleanup criteria, which is 19, we were above that concentration. Additionally, lead was found at concentrations exceeding the impact to groundwater quality standard. It's actually an impact to groundwater screening level. When that screening level is exceeded, you perform additional laboratory analysis to determine a site-specific standard. The concentrations of lead we have to date are below that site-specific standard that was calculated. On Friday and, last Friday and yesterday, I collected an additional 75 samples within the park, plus or minus. I performed a grid across all the grass areas that previously showed exceedances. Those samples will be analyzed for lead and arsenic to determine if it is a site-wide issue, or if the initial four areas of concern were air sample locations are hotspots that can be handled on a more localized level. At this point, I, they've been collected or submitted to the lab, and when the results are made available, we will determine an appropriate remedial strategy.
Thank you.
You have to come up to--
I always think there are different kinds of arsenic.
Hold up, one second.
Oh, Anne Schnackenberg, should I reintroduce myself?
You didn't have the microphone.
Oh, oh, here, thank you. Are there different types of arsenic, and are those different types of arsenic associated with the pesticide use from farmland versus industrial? Because I know that stream that runs through that park runs also through the Athenia Steel, Athenia Park and all in, in Clifton, where they also had remediation issues, I believe, and I just wanted to know how much of that could possibly be--
Or it runs, or--
Does it, oh, it runs the other way, yeah. And I guess that's my question as far as arsenolad. It was my understanding that that kind of pesticide, the arsenic would leach out and the lead would generally remain, but I'm not a chemist.
Arsenic, in its elemental form, is only arsenic.
Okay.
After application, it can be inorganic or organic. Organic arsenic, which means that it's bound to carbon, is less hazardous in general. Lead arsenic, which is a historic pesticide developed in the early 1900s and used very heavily in the 1930s through the 40s when DDT or other organics were being-- when DDT or other organics were being pesticides were introduced. At that time, lead arsenic's use was still around, did not get banned until 1988 by the EPA, but because there were better products, theoretically better products out there, DDT wound up being banned before lead arsenic was actually banned. So theoretically, there was a better product on the market, and lead arsenic's use decreased through the 40s and 50s when these other pesticides were developed. I don't know that you could truly make a distinction, but at this point, based on site history and use based on lead arsenic, in your investigation, when you lined lead and arsenic together, generally lead arsenic was at a ratio of three parts lead to one part arsenic. That's just the typical lead arsenic proportions. The combination of both in the soil leads to potential being historically applied pesticides as opposed to any other industrial use. Both lead and arsenic are fairly nimble bile compounds when it comes to potential impacts to groundwater and leaching out of the soils. That's why they remain around after sixty years of pesticide use. They're still in the soil, but they do not leach out of it. All right, for the quick...
All right. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Thanks, Jen. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. So before, I'd just like to make the announcement that the conference and regular meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, May 8, 2018, at 5:30 and 6:00 p.m. respectively. It will be held at William Patterson University in the John Victor Machuga Student Center, 300 Hampton Road, Wayne. So we hope you'll welcome to join us at William Patterson at the next meeting. Have a motion to adjourn.
Make that motion. Terrence.
Duffy.
Freeholder.
Yes. Laporte.
Freeholders out there. Bartlett. Best.
Yes.
Duffy.
Ford.
Yes.
Deputy Director James. Director Lizarra.
Yes.